So, so just to conclude that thought, um, so we, we were considering doing this project um, around in and around City Hall and we saw the opportunity to make some um improvements where we could uh either uh reuse for irrigation or do a direct capture and injection of storm water. And so um Metropolitan was gracious enough to partner with us on a potential grant um that we are, we are in the conceptual um, you know, area of to see how this will work. But uh as Commissioner Trevino had mentioned, it's a half million dollar commitment from Metropolitan uh in order to construct this facility if we're able to move forward with um with this work at, at City Hall.
And I, and I just want to say if I can't, if the, if the Chair would indulge me for a minute. Yeah, this is going to go before the Metropolitan Board in April for final ratification of this half million dollars. And it's, we are the first city in the San Diego Valley to have, to be a part of this pilot project. This project was voted on a couple of years ago by um uh Director Ghul from the city of Los Angeles. Uh it was his initiative to uh capture more storm water. And so we voted on it, um, I was on the board at the time to, to bring this, this project to uh our cities throughout the service area of the Metropolitan Water District. And Metropolitan has made a, a huge commitment money-wise to the cities and we're very fortunate to be the first one in the San Diego Valley to uh take advantage of this. So uh I'm pretty excited by this. Um also, I understand Ted that, that we're going to be getting some, some matching funds from, from uh Prop W. Is that correct?
Yeah, um, and so the idea was that we, we can use some of our uh local Measure W funding uh that is our, so when the city, the city puts about six hundred thousand dollars a year into um its property taxes, which goes to our Measure W pot. And some of that goes to the regional projects, which are the ones you see on the screen here. But some of that also goes to our um, our local return. And so that would be some of the money that we would utilize to build these types of new stormwater projects.
Yes, and we do, um, we do have some friends in the Regional Oversight Committee of the Prop W um groups. So I think they will look favorably upon this project for, for, for um South Pasadena.
Terrific. Yeah, thank you so much, Commissioner Trevino.
And I think you had quite a bit to do with that too, Charles, so thank you.
So, so there's some, a lot of exciting things happening with stormwater, all in early phases. But uh again, we'll be talking about these types of projects here um at, at this commission. And I think we've, we've had a, a conversation about um, these Arroyo Seco projects in the past. Uh those right now are, they're the feasibility study to apply for some of that Measure W funding is, is wrapping up. And we expect to apply for construction money uh coming this uh June or July from LA County. So I'll move on here to uh the final chapter, Chapter 10. Um and this talks about uh, this is the culmination of all this work and talks about the capital improvement program uh that is recommended um here by Corolo, the um the author of this one water plan. And I'm sort of scrolling down here, but let me get to some of these final tables. Okay, so we have a couple of tables here. Let me see if I can make this bigger. Okay, so this, this first table, which is two pages. So this is page one and this is page two down here. Um covers a lot of these water projects that I've been talking about. Um, the very uh, so you know, I'll, I'll go through this, but it basically lists all the projects in their detail um and their costs. And then what's, what's very important to notice is these um phased terms. So it's a thirty-year plan. So Phase One is the first ten years, then the second ten years, and the third ten years. And you can see what's a higher priority based on where it is in, in the plan. So these are in the first ten years and then the next ten. And actually, in this category, there's no uh thirty-year items because these are the most important improvements. So they're all scheduled in the first twenty years. But these are the fire flow enhancements and it actually shows you where in the city uh they're being recommended. And this is to basically uh expand the fire flow system to accommodate um uh what's, what's going to be necessary based on um the growth numbers of the, of the plan projects. And so you can see here that um as far as fire flow enhancements go, it's recommending about twelve million dollars um in these types of enhancements. So uh the next categories are-
The twelve million was for the twenty years?
That is, yes, but it's only for fire um
Correct.
enhancements. Yes, there's other elements, but yes, exactly. That's twelve million dollars over twenty years.
Oh.
Yeah. Um, and then you'll see there's another million dollars down here um for other uh capacity improvements. So the Magnolia rezoning that we talked about, that purple zone in the center is part of that. And that, the plan um notes uh could largely be developer funded. So there's another cat, there's another column here that shows what is uh, what can be contributed by either a developer or a grant. And so that's where those impact fees would, would come into play. So the next page here is where you'll sort of see the big bucks in the water system. Um, and, and let me sort of jump uh to the, the catch here and not bury the lead. Is that the water system? We're not talking about the sewer stormwater systems yet. The plan is we're macromending a hundred eighty-six million dollars, a big, very big number over the next thirty years. And the bulk of that number is up here at the top of the second page, a hundred and forty-six million, which is replacing all of the water lines in the city over the next thirty years. So if you were to add up the fire flow replacements and the capacity replacements and then the remainder of the lines here, you can see here, there's, you know, seventy-one thousand linear feet, four thousand linear feet, which is the better part of a mile. Um, so you'll, you'll actually add up to the entire um pipeline system for the city because many of it is old and age. And you know, as you all live here, you know how often we have water main breaks and things like that. And so um that's the big ticket item uh for the water system um is replacing those pipes over thirty years. Um, some other items you'll see here is uh, high priority is the replacement of the West Side Reservoir. And um our next step in that is a seismic and, and structural evaluation.
The, the, the replacement of all the pipelines, that takes into account all of the costs, excavation, paving, replacement, everything.
Exactly, exactly. So the way that um Corolo does that number is they basically take what a, what a typical project would cost um uh without, not, not just like a, a small area, but on a long, a long pipeline. So you can actually disperse the cost along the whole thing. And yes, the excavation, the replacement, new valves and things like that. And they come up with uh what they call the unit cost, which is, you know, they, they say it's two hundred and ten uh dollars per foot, basically. And that's how they do that, incorporate all that value.
Ted, uh Ted, are these uh in, in uh in the uh category of, of highest need and then second highest and any, any category listing?
Yes, they are. So um, the, the water pipelines, they've spread out over the thirty years by saying like, what are the, what are the worst? Uh what they expect to be the worst condition? Um, and then the next necessary, and yes, but they divide them up that way. And so you'll see in that same respect, for example, West Side Reservoir is in the earlier phase of this whole plan in Phase One.
Okay, alright. So we're looking at, at the first phase, twenty-four million, seven hundred thousand?
Exactly, that's exactly right. Um, and we've, we've sort of um given counsel a preview of these numbers when we started talking about the capital improvement plan, but you're talking about twenty-four million. Um, and then about forty-six million and then about a big, you know, seventy-five million to wrap it up in the last ten years.
You know, Ted, do you know the status of the seismic um study on West Side Reservoir?
Yes, um, we are finalizing the uh professional services agreement. Our plan is to have that actually at the March sixteenth meeting with this plan. Um, as long as we can get everything signed and wrapped up uh to start um that process.
Thank you.
And so there's a couple other um large ticket projects to be considered here. Um uh, for example, um though the, the Raymond Elevated Tank will likely remain. Um, it is, you know, a nice um marker for the city and there's actually uh cell uh devices on it. Um, it, it doesn't necessarily have to be used for water uh for the long term. Um, there's other technologies uh that might be more reliable and, and uh easier to control, such as um uh variable frequency drives. Um, and the same thing for the Raymond Tank. So we have a programmed in here, an evaluation of those technologies to see if that's a better long-term solution for the city versus having a, a, a gravity flow system.
The, the Raymond, the Raymond Tank, Ted, is almost like the Hollywood sign for South Pasadena.
Yeah, it's actually the book, it's Beliki, isn't it, Beliki?
Oh yeah, the Beliki Tank, yes, exactly. So the, so yeah, the tank's not going anywhere. But the, the thought is we might not use it for uh, for water pressure uh in the future.
It doesn't hold that much water anyway, does it?
Right. Yeah, I think it's about two hundred thousand gallons.
Right.
Yeah.
But it looks great.
It looks great, yes. And it's not, it's not going anywhere.
Yeah, that's uh the, the leaky um water tower is near Sam and I um up in the hills of Indiana.
Yeah, we're, and, and we're willing, we're willing to go up there and paint it anytime.
Yes, well, we might take you up on that. Uh, I'll knock off a couple bucks off the plan here if you can help us do that. Yeah, um, beautiful view from up there. I've, I've seen it myself.
Well, Dave, there's already a scaffolding there, so you're welcome.
Yeah, I've seen that too, yeah.
The paint.
So um, so may, may not be the same for the Raymond Tank, which is a much lower elevation relatively. Uh, so we'll take a look at that as well. Um, but there's other site improvements here uh that can be done, such as replacing motors and improving well structures. Um, implementing backup power uh for uh the different pump sites. And then you'll see a whole list of various improvements that have been identified at specific facilities. For example, our Metropolitan Water Connection, some improvements identified there. Um, and at the Indiana Pump Station and then our various different um state reservoirs and stations, which have been um rehabilitated over time, but would need some work in the future. For example, Grand, as it's two um metallic tanks, would need a recoding um at some point in the future. And so those costs are captured here uh as well.
You know, Ted, the Indiana um uh, is that a, a reservoir or a tank?
It, it's actually a pump station. So it's kind of um works in parallel with the West Side Reservoir and Pump Station. So if we have to take West Side Reservoir offline, um, which we would for that seismic and structural evaluation. We wouldn't empty the reservoir, but we would stop using it um during the time we were doing the evaluation. You know, it would be like a day or, or two. Um, we would use Indiana as our pump station to provide um boosting pressure to um the Beliki Zone, which is the West Side, or sorry, the um Southwest Hills.
It's always been locked and I thought that it's just a stairwell to um underneath the, the road, but it's, it's really a pumping station. I was-
Actually a pumping station.
Yeah, it's very conspicuous. It's underground, yeah.
I see someone going in there just about every other day. Uh, and, and I'm, I'm assuming he's checking to make sure that everything is pumping fine.
Yes, that's what they're doing. And uh we make sure we do a head count at the end of every day to make sure everybody comes back out of that station also. So nobody gets lost down there. So um, so that in summary is the, is the Water Capital Improvement Program. Um, I'll quickly touch on the other areas of the study. Um, not nearly as much um expenditure. That is by far the largest, a hundred and eighty-six million. In, in its entirety, the whole plan is about two hundred and thirty million. Um, so you could see from the uh sewer plan here, which in, in its entirety is about fifteen million over thirty years. So about half a million dollars each year. Um, and so um it does the same thing that the water plan does, where it basically picks these uh, you know, areas of the sewer system that need um either near-term attention in the first ten years or uh to a lesser extent in the next twenty years or in the next um thirty years. Um, and so no major, the city doesn't have any major um sewer assets. We have some very small lift stations, but it's mostly a small, um, small diameter um collection uh piping system for sewer. And then we'll get into um the storm uh water section here, which is basically um the projects that we showed you on that one page. We have the Arroyo Seco Projects. Um, there's a small project that we're supporting. What's, the project isn't small, but um for the Rio Hondo Project because the city has much of small, such a small contribution to that um that uh system, maybe about three percent of the total system. We have a small contribution to a, a project there. Um, and then we have a, another project that I showed you in the south um west corner of the city. Um, and then just various improvements um throughout the um throughout the city at different parks. And the project that Commissioner Trevino is talking about is relatively new. So it wasn't captured on this plan, which has been underway for some uh, for some time. But in total, uh, this estimates about thirty-three million dollars. And we do expect a lot of this to be grant funded. We're talking about that Measure W um grant funding as well as other uh funding, like the example we're talking about for Metropolitan Water District. Um, and so there will be uh some expected uh city costs in the future. But stormwater is, is one thing that um, you know, unlike some of our other uh utility infrastructure, there does seem to be a substantial amount of grant funding available in the coming years. So um with that, that is, that is the um, that is the planet's entirety. Uh, and we do plan on bringing this to um council in a couple of weeks. So tonight, we are looking for your recommendation um and action to make a recommendation to council to recommend that uh, that they actually adopt this plan for us to start um our master planning and, and using this in our capital improvement program uh for this coming fiscal. So with that, I'll take any questions. Yes.
Okay, so we have, okay, great. So we have Commissioner Hernan. Oh, I'm sorry, uh Vice Chair Malling, did you have something?
Hey Ted, I just wanted to ask you, in this improvement plan, I didn't see anything about um improving uh the, the Public Works Offices, because aren't you guys upsite now?
Yes, um, we are, we are actually at the um, at the Garfield Reservoir. But fortunately for us, um, and you know, I try not to brag about this too much, but we are in a brand-new building because this Garfield Reservoir was built-
They're looking pretty good.
So yeah, well, we've got a very nice, modern building with uh, you know, and we are actually just about to buy new furniture for the staff that moved in here.
Yeah, okay, so you guys are all taken care of because I was saying is if we do have an improvement plan, we might as well budget that in for you all as well.
That's true. Um, I will say that as far as city facilities go, and where did my, oh, here we go. Um, we will be taking a look at that for the other facilities in the city that aren't so new, like City Hall and um the various park houses and the War Memorial. And so through our strategic plan and a separate effort, we'll do a similar type of assessment of all the city facilities and determine what the costs are going to be to upgrade those and bring them up to um, you know, today's standards as well.
Got it. Perfect. Uh, that would be great.
Okay, um, we did have a motion to uh make this item a recommendation to council and uh first to motion was uh Commissioner San Hernandez. Second was Commissioner Charles Trevino uh with, with a voice vote. I'm just going to go down the list as we do. Uh, Vice Chair Malling.
Uh, yes.
Commissioner of Frank Tania.
Yes.
Commissioner San Hernandez.
Yes.
And Commissioner Charles Trevino.
Yes.
Um, Ted, I don't know if you'd mind, but now that we have um all commissioners present, can we revisit um item five? What he was trying to get into uh minutes so that we have that item addressed.
Is that okay? Oh, um, yeah, I mean, however, however you would go about doing that. You want to do another roll call on item number five?
Yeah, if that's okay.
Move approval of item five.
Okay.
Second.
Great, thank you. And then with voice, voice vote, Vice Chair Malling.
Yes.
Commissioner Frank Tania.
Yes.
Commissioner San Hernandez.
Yes.
Commissioner Charles Trevino.
Yes.
Awesome. Cool. Okay, so for both item five and item six, we have unanimous votes, passing both items four to zero. Thank you.
Yes, a follow-up question on uh number six. Um, you have two attachments, uh attachment one and the attachment two is the uh SS MP. Is that in conjunction with the um water plan, the master water plan?
Um, it, it, yes, it, it kind of is and it, it kind of isn't. So I, I'll say that um when we contracted Corolo to do our One Water Master Plan, we knew they would be doing a comprehensive evaluation of the sewer system and recommendations related to it. And the Sewer System Management Plan is, is actually a state requirement that we have to do every five years. And so the two were completed together uh by Corolo. But um where the One Water Plan um was a city-initiated effort to um facilitate like a master planning for thirty years. This is a more so a requirement of the, of the city by the state every five years. So we did them together. And so they're, they're developed on the same resources and information, but they're actually separate documents. Um, and so when we, when we adopt these with council, uh we'll adopt them together, but we'll identify them as two distinct plans that are being adopted.
Now, I, I recalled reading um that we, that the state of California obtained a judgment um against us on um repiping the um, the lines. Uh, where are we in that?
Yes, so we, we believe that um this plan um completes all the requirements of that judicial order. We actually have it uh mentioned um in the plan here. And so um I'm currently looking into what the next steps are with that, with regard to the decree. Um, but it, it's our expectation that the requirements have been completed through that assessment and through the repairs that were previously done.
Okay, thank you.
Is it, is it? How, how did we come, how did we come to hire Corolo? Is that something that they've done time and time again, this type of report?
Um, so I think it was a, a couple of years ago, but there was a um, a request for proposals um that's evaluated on criteria and then they, they were selected. Um, but yeah, this is something that they do often. This team that we're working with, um they're very adept at doing the modeling procedures and they actually gave us a lot of um insight. If I were to like, uh, let me jump into one of the appendices here real fast. Um, but you can see here, uh, you know, we had some very complicated modeling scenarios that they helped us undergo and, and they're very good at this. And so um it, it's a very uh well-renowned firm for evaluating these types of water systems.
Do, do they take this information and just run with it? Or are we actually, we, when I say we, the staff, are they actually involved in generating and helping them?
I, I could imagine. Uh, yeah, um, we actually, in this building, we were upstairs sort of with the maps, the old maps on the table, pointing out valves and talking about which directions they could go and, and the ideas and things like that. So since our water staff is so um, has such great historical knowledge about our water system um, and they have such uh vast knowledge about the computing component of it and the modeling component of it, to have everybody together about what was a realistic um new uh configuration. And you know, what's the best way to install that, given the street configurations was a really valuable partnership?
Have they completed their contract then?
Um, they're almost done. Our last step here is actually to bring it to council. So um even though I'm doing the presentation for the commission, we'll actually have the um the plan author uh from Corolo, who's actually a South Pasadena resident, um come and present at the council. Um, and then once they do that, um then we'll have completed, they'll have completed their work for this contract.
Okay, and I won't ask how much we paid them because it's a lot of money.
Uh, yeah, I think, I think it was about five hundred thousand dollars for all.
Oh, that's not so bad.
Yeah, okay, maybe, yeah, maybe closer to six, but it was around that ballpark.
Okay. Good.
I, I will, I will say, Sam, that they're very well-respected by Metropolitan staff.
They are as well.
It's gonna, it's gonna help us in the long run.
Good. Who's the young man that works for them that lives here in South Pass?
Um, it's actually um their um uh project manager, uh Inga, and she lives here.
Okay.
Um, and then there was other, two other team members. I don't know if, if they live in South Pasadena or not. Um, but she'll be the one who's doing the um presentation in, on March sixteenth.
Perfect. Alright, thank you, Ted. That's wonderful. Great report. Right on.
Thank you all.
Okay. And I did pick up another one of the safety walks, safe, safe walk signs that someone crashed into in front of Mike and Anne's. Just to let you all know, that's the uh seventh one I've picked up when people hit them and run off with them, so um.
Thank you for grabbing that.
Take it away.
We're ready now to move on to number seven.
Oh, that's me. Oh.
Thanks, Ray.
Sorry, I'm sleeping. Um, I just want to make a comment that on uh February twenty-second, Sheila Pouts, the Director of Community Parks, reported that there's another pole in the Arroyo Seco Gulf Course that's damaged due to the last windstorm that we had. It's a little minor, but um she's gonna be working with um, with Ted um to get a um complete um geotech and wind, wind study um to assess what the reasons are why the wood poles are easily damaged and um falling and, um, and uh if we wanted to, well, I guess you'll study the soil. And if we wanted to replace it with steel poles instead of wood poles, it really depends on, on what uh Ted and a consultant um finds out about the soil. Because it's, I don't know when the poles, the wooden poles went up, but I thought they were just replaced a few years back. Not too old, but uh they're starting to get, you know, damage and uh cracked and actually fall, two of them falling down. So there's five poles and four poles cost about eighty-three thousand dollars. Plus, if we um replace them with um uh steel poles, there's an additional fourteen thousand. We're looking about a hundred thousand just for the four poles. And there's additional one pole, so I don't know. They have to go back to the insurance of the Donovan Brothers who are operating it to make sure that it's covered by their insurance. That's all. Thank you.
Um, thank you. Uh, moving on to item eight, uh Commissioner Communications. Uh, Vice Chair Malling, do you have anything for the group? Vice Chair Mallin, do you have anything for the group?
Nothing further. Please proceed with the other commissioners.
Commissioner Sam Hernandez.
No, we're good. I I think I've said my piece already. And I, once again, thank you, Ted, for doing such a wonderful job and making this presentation. I'm sure that council will will look favorably toward it when it's presented to them. Thank you.
Commissioner Frank Tanya.
I have nothing this evening.
Thank you. Commissioner Charles Trevino.
He's not speechless, he's also motionless.
I think we lost him. Okay, maybe that means nothing for the group at this time. Moving on to item.
Oh, no, I, Commissioner Trevino is there. I think you might just unmute the commissioner.
Okay, I was looking for him.
Yeah.
There you are. You would just have to unmute yourself.
But I don't have anything. I mean, I'm just, I'm just happy that I made it, made the meeting. Thank you, Raina. You were really helpful. Appreciate that.
Not a problem anytime. Thank you. Alrighty, um, item nine stuff, please on communications. Ted, do you have anything for the group?
I just have two quick things. I I mentioned this last time, but I'll mention it again. Is that we'll be holding our six two six Golden Streets Mission to Mission. Program again this year on Sunday, May first. It'll also be combined with the Athletic Music Festival the day before on April thirtieth. It'll be following the same route as last time in South Pasadena along Mission and Morango. So we're working with our neighboring cities to make this a great event. So please join us on May first for the Mission to Mission event. And the only other thing I'll say is that we. On our South Pasadena Environmental Programs page, so if you go to the government tab. And then. Public Works. And then you click on Environmental Programs. We have a link to a waste collection survey. So as as many of you know, we are currently discussing a potential change to our. Exclusive refuse contract with Athens. And this is due to the new regulations to divert. Organic waste to an organic waste facility. And so we're taking this opportunity to gather some community feedback on our refuse services. So if you'd like to contribute, this survey will be open till March third next week. You just click on this and it'll take you through the survey and there's a couple of questions asking you about your, you know, personal experience with your. With your refuse services, so please contribute. And that's all I have.
Alrighty, thank you. Vice Chair Mallin, it's if you'd like to adjourn the meeting.
Absolutely. Thank you very much for everybody's time and our next meeting will be held on March ninth. And we will talk to everybody at that time and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Good night.
Good night.
Thank you all. Take care, Raina. Thanks again.
No, not a problem. Thank you.
Okay.